Let me know when you're ready. We're having some technological issues right now. Okay, we'll call it July the 8th Planning Commission meeting to order and the first order of business to determine a quorum. And we do have five commissioners present, Mr. Pratt and Mr. Simuleski are absent. Review of minutes from June 10th, 2021. Do I hear a motion to approve them? Motion to approve the minutes that I submitted. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion to second. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Here and then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, the ayes have it. The first order of business today is a rezoning request number 835 Joe Branton Senior, and that concerns three parcels of property 109-0000-002, 003, and 141. We have been asked to defer that item off the agenda until-
Not as much as I like to be, but on your screen you'll see the parcels on the zoning map, they're right here. This is basically town here. And now I'm going to switch over to the GIS parcel to be able to zoom out a little bit more to give perspective to these. So going back to it here is Brick Green Road, and this is the parcel that is being requested to be rezoned to R1 from AC. Right here's Town Limits, this is the Winding Woods Commerce Park, here's 78, here's Academy Road. The comprehensive plan for this particular area that was done and adopted in 2018 and was held stat meetings all throughout the county, a lot of you kind of remember that. Because of some of this economic development that we knew with Winding Woods Park identified that this area, particularly up around here, was going to be needed for some new residential rooftops in the future to help support job growth and the economic development that's in this area. Typically what you find is you find the job creators, and the job creators create the rooftops, and the rooftops bring your retail and your restaurants and so forth and so on. So that's kind of the progress of how we are today and where we've come today. This particular comp plan designation had the, two of them had the low-density rural and traditional neighborhood, as well as the medium-density and traditional neighborhood. Believe it or not, that medium-density traditional neighborhood sometimes can even often call for townhome-level density. Having said all of that, that's just a comprehensive plan. As you've heard staff many times before, these are just the future land use recommendations. To go along with these recommendations, staff always looks to see what kind of infrastructure is in the area, what kind of water and sewer is in the area at the time that somebody comes in to request changing or rezoning to meet these higher-density levels. There have been minimal investments in infrastructure at this time in this area, and I do believe the applicant has been working with our water and sewer department in regards to how to serve it with water and sewer. I believe they've come with some ideas, but I do believe that one of the bigger issues is how it's going to be served by water, and I still don't believe that has been worked out fully. So that's one of the things, I think, in the staff report you would see that probably would work its way through, as we mentioned about utilizing existing infrastructure in that area. To talk a little bit about the two zonings, being that this is our first meeting we've had up there, there's probably a lot of people in the audience aren't very as familiar with the process. The current zoning is AC. That is actually going through a text amendment currently. So what I'm going to speak to more is a little bit more about what we believe it will become. It will remain a one-acre lot size, but that minimum lot width will become 100 feet versus the 150 feet. The current uses of residential uses that could go on that parcel today as it's currently zoned would be, from a residential standpoint, because removing a lot of the more heavier, intense uses, of course, the cottage industries that we've been referring to, but if it was developed purely residential, it would be a one-acre minimum lot size, and it could be a stick-built home, but there also would be the ability for these parcels develop with mobile homes, and there could be more than one unit on the parcel. So there could be multiple mobile homes all throughout the parcels. If the property was to be rezoned to R1, those lot standards would change. Those lot standards would go to a minimum lot size of 14,500 square feet, but it would also allow for the ability, as a byright development, if the developer so chose to, to do the cluster subdivision. And I'm sure you all are familiar that we've seen a lot of developers utilize that. What that does is it's kind of a trade-off of taking some of what the lot space would have been, making the lot smaller, but then requiring that land to be preserved as open space that would be used for the HOA, as well as requiring perimeter and, more importantly, roadside buffers. So the, all of these roads along here, along Brick Green, 15, and Academy, as the cluster, if they were to utilize the cluster subdivision, would require 50-foot planted buffers, and it would require a 15-foot perimeter buffer. In addition to that, the site would require all of that additional open space. What they get in trade-off on that is, is they would get to go down to a lot program that would allow them to do 8,000 and 6,000-square-foot lots. So it's 14, 5, no buffers, no open space, cluster subdivision, smaller lots, a lot of land left as open space and required buffers to kind of help balance out and kind of not see it as much along the existing roads. You know, the, like I said, the comprehensive plan supports this area for residential growth to go along with the Winding Woods Commerce Park. That's been in the works quite some time, as you all recently know, that DHL came and spoke to you about their timeline on when that is to get going. Two parts to it, though, and just to kind of help support staff's kind of recommendation when I get to it, is, is that they've been working with water and sewer, there's still an issue with water, and we know that the roads, as I talked about, and the condition of those roads and some of those intersections currently are not really, you know, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I would say they're not really at a standard to handle high-density development. But when a developer comes in and they submit for their construction drawings, they have to go through a TIA process, which requires them to have a traffic study done, and that traffic study then would identify the additional traffic count in conjunction with what the current traffic count is, and then that traffic study would recommend all of the off-site improvements that would be required. Typically, these are turn lanes, intersection improvements, sometimes minor widenings of roads.
At the cost of the developer.
The developer would pay for that at the time of the preliminary plan. In addition to that, the developer, because of the new ordinance that the county adopted, would be responsible for paying for all of those off-site improvements to mitigate those So that would be a process at that time. At this time, though, you know, staff mentioned as a part of the AC zoning stuff, we mentioned the possibility of requiring impact studies as a part of the process of development to understand, so we have a better understanding of how these impacts are, not just to our road systems, because that's done at that time, but just more or less the impacts of how it affects the ability to serve these areas from government services, just overall, what is the future area. So staff has been talking about that. When we brought the AC text amendments, I know Kira spoke a little bit about that. There is no ordinance on the books that requires impact studies to be done as a part of rezoning or as a part of the development process at that time. However, staff is working towards getting language like that to Planning Commission in the next couple of months for the county council's consideration.
So what's the cost of an impact study?
Impact studies, they range depending on that, but from what we're understanding, it's similar to a traffic study. I mean, it's type, similar type science, once you get the numbers, it's a very scientific thing, you take-
But that's another cost upfront.
That would be, it would be a cost upfront, that whereas the traffic study is done more at the time of development, an impact study, if it was done as a part of a rezoning, would be considered a cost to help understand what the land use decision being made has an impact on that time for the rezoning.
But to me, it's kind of a chicken-and-egg thing. You know, today, all we're doing is looking at a rezoning to go from AC, which is no zoning, they could put a junkyard in there, another mine or anything like that under AC, but we're going to residential, which it should be. And then all the other things as far as infrastructure, that falls out as the planning and engineering is done, and I'm kind of against front-loading all these costs on the developer before they have the first lot.
Sure. So you're right, so that's kind of why I broke it down of when and why something would be required. Some things are required a little bit further in the process, as staff has mentioned in the past, and I know you've shared your thoughts on that, that, you know, when, when a municipality looks to annex and they pull something in, they, that's when they would be looking at those things as well. So while we're not a municipality, it would be a similar, staff was just kind of looking at as a similar business model, that as a part of that land use decision, we would evaluate how, what that has an impact on for the purposes of being able to serve it. But it is, no doubt, it is, it is another step, it is another cost. When and how, if it was a part of the rezoning, whether it be, you know, they, they kind of move forward and it's something that's done prior to third reading, you know, that's what staff's looking at to help figure out if this was something the county chose to go in the direction is to, you know, before they go and spend that cost, they get a pretty good assurance that the rezoning at least is going to go, everybody has an understanding of kind of what that impact is, and everything's kind of been worked out and resolved prior to it being rezoned as a part of third reading. Now, whether or not that's what the county chooses to do, that's what we're going to be working towards, bringing some language forward, and however it shakes out will be how it shakes out. But staff recommends that as a part of this request, to have an impact study performed, and once those impacts have been identified and resolved, staff can support their request.
Okay. Is the applicant or the applicant's rep here today? Is there anybody who would like to speak for or against this specific zoning? Yes, ma'am, please come forward, give us your name and address.
Hi, so my name is Angela Hurdin. I live at 103 Southwest Railroad Avenue, St. George. My husband has recently been elected to town council in St. George. We've lived in the town for three years. We lived in Harleyville in the 1990s, we moved to Somerville to the cottages of the Gehagen and lived there on the size lot that's being described. We were miserable in that setting, and so we moved away. Unfortunately, we moved to Mount Pleasant, which now is overdeveloped, and later moved to McClellanville, which we loved, but unfortunately McClellanville is very hard to get to and from when you're doing the things we do. So we chose to come back to St. George. We chose that because we love the small-town rural life. We wanted our children to see the stars in the sky unaffected by light pollution. We wanted them to live in areas with different socioeconomic statuses, so that they understood that everybody around them didn't look like them, didn't earn the same amount of money, didn't experience the same lifestyle or circumstances that they experienced, and essentially grow in compassion for others. We came back because we wanted to have chickens and horses and that sort of thing, and you can't do that in Somerville, Goose Creek, North Charleston, Mount Pleasant, any of those areas. Somerville was once a rural town, if any of you have lived here for that long, and it's changed. And a large part of that is because it grew to meet the needs of businesses that came to the area. And while some would argue that that was good for the people who lived in that area, there would be others who had lived there for generations, had children growing up in that area, who may not agree with that. My question today is, we've got two main roads into St. George. We have Highway 15 from I-26, and we have Highway 78. Those are the most highly-traveled routes unless people are coming off of I-95.
Ma'am, I don't want to interrupt you, but could you address the rezoning issue?
I, so that's the point. So when this gentleman is talking about reducing the lot sizes for this space, he's talking about higher numbers of people in that area, which will in fact, in fact, impact the agricultural life of the people who are farmers in this town, who will probably, when commercialism comes this way, be impacted by rezoning to suit that need. The gentleman spoke to the businesses that come with that sort of growth. So I am speaking to the issue of rezoning in order to pack more people onto smaller lots, because that means more people in an area that the infrastructure cannot support. The schools cannot support it, our current road systems can't support it. He spoke to the issue of an impact study and a road study. If that means talking with the people, like the people on Highway 78, who now have a four-lane road moving into their front yard, that might be an important thing to consider. The people who live in this area generally want to live peaceably in an area that stays rural, stays agricultural. So what I'm asking the town or the county to do is to consider what rezoning in order to create a more densely populated area will do for the people who live in St. George. It may benefit the, the big-money people that are coming into the area, it may benefit the town. I mean, the, well, the town and the county with regard to revenue, but with regard to livability, it may not benefit the people who live here already. And so I'm asking you to consider that as you're considering a more densely populated subdivision.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Anybody else like to speak for or against? Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. My name is Thomas J. Joe Weimer. I'm a property owner who joins this property, two ways, basically. I'm here because the roads cannot support these people. I'm, like the lady just said, it's not there. I'm against it being a 150 of, all of that number of houses. I'm, I'm for not changing the zoning. I'm also, I want you all to know that they are widening Spring Road, they sent me a letter from a real estate person, not from, from the county, that they are widening Spring Road, which joins this property too, and they're going to be funneling the trucks, the trucks from this Winding Woods project, they're going to be funneling it down Spring Road too. So that's going to be traffic there, traffic on Academy Road, which is a school there too, and it's a high-traffic area in the mornings and in the afternoon, and I'm here to tell you I'm against it. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Weimer. Anyone else?
How you doing? My name is Andrew Soesby, and like Mr. Weimer said and the other lady said, I'm also a homeowner on Brick Green Road. My wife and I moved to this area in 2005, we built our home in 2007. We made a significant investment, not only in the property, but also in the, the construction of the home. We've seen that property, just like many others, mature through the years, and we certainly are thankful for that. This area's been good to us, this town's been good to us, and it's, it would be a shame for this to actually move forward, because not only would it hurt the community, it would hurt our property value, which obviously we have a huge interest in. So I'm definitely against it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. I am Judy Britt. I lives at 258 Brick Green Road, St. George, South Carolina. To all of you, Mr. Carter and councilmen, I'm here to let you know, I'm not against the housing, but I am against what has happened in our neighborhood. Crime has eventually started rising in our neighborhood. I have people and towns that come to look in my back door, and you know what? They even killed my dog and wouldn't even stop to say, "We killed your dog." No respect, you know what I'm saying? So with these houses coming into the area, it's just a no-no, okay? I, I want the houses to come, and I don't want the houses to come, because the crime rate is going to go up. We have people that ride through the neighborhood as of now. I have two nephews that drive 18-wheels. They come through and they egg the trucks. They got to clean their trucks before they even get ready to go to work, and that should be a no-no. You know, if we're going to come and do things, let's respect each other. We are better together. So developer, come, talk with your people, let them know what you can do. Together, we can make a difference, but come talk to your people. I've lived at Brick Green Road for 53 years, and I've never seen the traffic that I see now that comes through there. They come through flying, we, we have no control of the road. If you, I used to walk the road, but I don't walk it anymore. I walk around my farm because I say, "I do want to live a long time." Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Britt. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name's Richard Wood. I live at 148 Trudy Lane. It's at the opposite end on the dirt road end of Spring Road. We used to live at Dorchester, Baconbridge, and Somerville. If you're familiar with that area, it used to be two lanes and two lanes, now it's five lanes and five lanes. We lived there 27 years. We moved to St. George to get away from that. I drive 45 minutes one way to work every day, traffic permitting, and we came here for the rural lifestyle. We came here to get out of those subdivisions that you can shake your neighbor's hand through the windows, and this is what we fear that will happen with this area if you zone it R1, that it's going to get highly dense, it's going to impact Spring Road for one thing, because Spring Road is a little tiny road that's owned by the state. It's not even a county road, it's a state road. So they're going to have to do something to widen that, make it bigger, whatever, but we're worried that it's going to start encroaching down the road into our area. Somebody wants to, you know, they built up Spring Road, now they want this area zoned R1 closer to the airport. Those kinds of impacts is what concerns me, and the high impact of so many vehicles, so many people, increasing crime, and it's outside the city limits. So now you are putting more work on Dorchester County Sheriff. I think all this is enough to say, let's take a step back, leave it zoned AC, let them go one acre. I live in a mobile home, I'm kind of proud of my mobile home. So it's not a bad thing to live in a mobile home, because I'm very proud of mine. Thank you.
Anyone else? And last, once again, is the applicant or the applicant's rep here? Sir?
I'm the applicant, Brian Kaiser. Oh, yes, took me a little longer to get here and to call.
Okay, if you'd just come up and answer any questions from the council?
Yeah, Brian Kaiser. My address, 1494 Stratton Place, Mount Pleasant, South Carolina.
Commissioners? Go ahead.
Do you, do you have a plan in place, or have you-
We have a site plan in place. The site plan would be limited, I think it's to the R1, cluster ordinance or R1, straight R1 zoning, which would be in, in character with a lot of the other areas if we did R1 cluster. The site plan would preserve a lot of green space areas, and the development plan does not immediately impact or is not adjacent to any existing developments, and that's one reason we looked at that cluster option.
Well, then where, where would open space be in-
Do you have that site plan marked?
Yeah. That's the-
That's, that's the only one I got.
That's the R1, we have a different R1 cluster option that's not up here. It, the other, the site plan that we have today, it would, it has homes in, in this area, in this area, and all of this area is preserved as green space. So none of these homes are shown, and none of these homes are shown, so it'd just be development in these two pods. So this, all this becomes a green space, and looking at the area of their homes, I think kind of in here, and, and then this area, and then, of course, the school. So we would, we would not be immediately adjacent to any new proposed development, or existing development, I should say.
What, are you donating land for school? Is that what the indication is?
The R1 cluster ordinance requires you to have 30% open space, and so the idea would be to preserve that at this area to the south, across from the school is open space. I can't speak for my clients as far as what the future use of that would be, or if there was even an option to donate that parcel to the county for some future use, but that would be in consideration.
This was farmland previously, right? So buffers would have to be reestablished?
Correct. Any, any place, because it was a farmland, that, that means, obviously, it was-
Cleared.
And the soil is used for farms, is that as a part of development, if it was a straight R1 development, like I said before, there are less buffer requirements, but there would be, you know, through normal development, you have to reestablish canopy coverage when you transfer from that land use of farm to a residential development, that you would have to go and plant trees within the development to reestablish that coverage that used to be there. But if it was a cluster subdivision, that would require a significant amount of buffers as well along the perimeter. It actually also requires the streets to be done with what we refer to as enhanced street section, that requires sidewalks on both sides, as well as street trees establishing a canopy coverage within the road network.
Thank you.
And the updated site plan shows 151 homes, not 175, as the site plan shows.
Okay. Commissioners, any further questions for the applicant?
Mr. Kaiser, did staff and you go over the impact analysis that they were desiring and recommended in their packet today? Y'all had any discussions?
I was late in attendance, so.
Okay. Y'all didn't have any of those discussions?
The impact analysis as a part of just rezonings has been at a, at a broader, wider spectrum within the county regarding how we handle AC in the districts and stuff like that. When people come in and they spec or they talk about future rezonings, staff takes every opportunity to talk about some of the things that we would be looking for. I know Brian had a lot of meetings, we have, he probably has multiple meetings and conversations. Saying whether or not an impact, as a part of a rezoning, an impact statement regarding the impacts to it, I, I wouldn't be able to sit here and honestly say that that was part of some of the original conversations, but as a, as a broader scope outside of that, that's something staff's been talking to about for months, and this has just come up, you know, in the last, I'd say, five months? Five months?
What kind of concerns me? Do we have a scope for an impact study? Do we have a definition of what it would be?
Well, that's what we're working on, and that's what we're hoping to kind of have. But typically, an impact study, which is done by most, a lot of municipalities and stuff, just pretty much looks at how things are done to affect, you know, again, I talked about what traffic studies do, and, you know, water and sewer is a little bit more scientific. There, there is an issue with how the site would be served with water. An impact study would be more about studying its impact on the ability to just serve new development in areas that simply is not currently equipped to manage them at that time. It could be fire, it could be police, government response.
If it's done before the rezoning, when they're spending- If it's done before the rezoning, we're spending money for an impact study with no guarantee that their rezoning will take place.
Right, so that's where staff was...
Whereas if we're strictly looking at rezoning, that takes, that comes first, then the impact study kicks in when we look at what kind of developments going in there.
Well, yeah. I mean, again, I know that's there. I think staff kind of looks at it as that, you know, the intent of the rezoning oftentimes when we see them, and I'm sure Mr. Kaiser can speak to this, is they have a general good idea of what the product and what they want to do at that time is. And to understand what that change in land use is, is oftentimes when, like, a municipality would require it as a part of the annexation. They would evaluate it of what their ability to serve it is as a part of the annexation and what that zoning is. So that's kind of...
And looking for their return on investment.
Sure, yes.
ROI.
Pretty much. That's exactly right. Is this, does this cost the taxpayer money? Or is this bringing something to the table? Ultimately, that's what municipalities look at. But I know, I mean, he's worked in many different jurisdictions that probably speak to what impact statements is associated to development municipalities would be done. I know Mount Pleasant has some, right, so I mean...
So in that regard, we have, we've done some traffic, we've done a traffic study, and we've also reached out to the utility providers. There's sufficient water and sewer to serve these homes. So that's kind of where we're at in the process. If there's some specific questions, but all those things would be addressed as part of that impact study. Make sure you have sufficient water, sewer, traffic, ambulance and fire truck and police service, all that.
Just for me to understand, the recommendation from staff is not to approve or disapprove. It's to recommend an impact study?
No, we, based off of the comprehensive plan, this area does call for residential rooftop growth. We recognize that, okay? We recognize that Whining Woods Industrial Park.
But you said after the impact study.
Right, that we, as a part of, that we've been saying about looking at impact studies as a part of rezoning process, especially in these areas that are a little bit more rural that we know are going to be...
I understand all that, and I'm trying to get at what we're doing today.
Oh, well, yes, staff's recommendation is that, whoop. Is that, yes, is to, as a part of the rezoning, is to have an impact study performed that takes a look at those items.
Are you recommending a rezoning change or not?
Yes, as a part of that impact study to identify what those impacts are, and if it's satisfactory to the resolution of those impacts, that staff can support the rezoning to R1.
Okay, thank you very much. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I believe, and when I hear what staff say that we're going to do, and they would like to see an impact study, and I believe that probably comes out of, we've done this same old game before, and we put developments in before we know the actual impact on the surrounding area on fire on the sheriff. We've already know that this piece of property is not in the town limits, which is going to make it harder to serve for Dorchester County Sheriff's Office. We have heard that Spring Road is still a dirt road in here and is not completely paved. We have, we've heard that there are water issues, that we obviously have some intersection issues that cannot handle the traffic that would come out of this. And I think we need to request that due diligence to make sure that when we put a development into an area that has been previously farmland, that those impacts are addressed. And I think that we do need to recommend that impact, that impact study be done along with rezoning.
Okay, was that in the form of a motion?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
And the motion is?
The motion is that we can, we need to have an impact study done as staff has recommended. And I'm not going to move for rezoning until we know what those impacts are.
Okay, now that's contrary to what staff recommendation is, right?
You have a motion, though. You have a motion.
Well, we don't have a second yet.
I'll second.
You got a second? Okay. Discussion?
Yes, sir. So I concur with some of the impacts of the development, and some of those concerns are very legitimate. However, this is not like a plat request timeframe. This is a rezoning request. So I think we could approve the rezoning request with the contingent requirement to have the study, impact study, done so that the county knows what impacts this would give them so they can hold up the development through the next steps of the process or require additional...
Mr. Carter, could I speak?
Pieces.
Hang on, that was my understanding of what the staff recommendation was.
We need to be, we need to have a good picture of what those impacts are.
Okay.
Sorry.
Because that was my understanding, yours, of what staff recommended.
Yeah, as a part of the rezoning process, I think it's a hybrid...
Not to deny the rezoning.
We're not recommending a denial. It goes with the comprehensive plan. It, there's a, there's a, there's a, there's a Whining Wood, there's a development part. When you have economic development, it makes good planning sense to, for the purposes of to get rooftops and people close to those jobs, because that is what keeps traffic off the road. So we don't have people commuting 20 and 30 minutes to and from these industrial parks.
Mr. Jim?
I would...
Can I ask one question from staff real quick? Are you requesting, are you, are you recommending that we approve the zoning change with the impact study? Or are you suggesting that we have the impact study first to know what those impacts are before rezoning? I'm just asking what the recommendation is, because I've heard two things, and that's why I'm trying to clarify. And I think that's what Mr. Carter's trying to clarify as well.
That's exactly what I'm trying to clarify.
So I'm going to read. Let me just, my papers got a little messed around. So the recommendation is it matches the comprehensive plan. We have economic development in the area. Staff can support the request, but we need to first see what the impacts are. And we need to know how those impacts, once identified, are resolved. And if, if it's satisfactory to the county, staff can support rezoning it to R1 for the development to serve the area and the housing needs of the area and the future industrial park. As a part of the rezoning.
I think it's backwards.
You just said it two ways. Oh, go ahead, sir.
Well, if we approved Ms. Kunda's request and it didn't get rezoned, what good would rezoning do him if the impact study comes back that the county couldn't support it?
That's what I'm saying, is it needs to be done as a part of the rezoning.
Right, that's what, that's the egg and the chicken, Mr. Carter. If, if it doesn't come back that y'all can support it, then he's for naught.
Right, so as a part of what we've been discussing, as a part of the impact studies for the last few months, is that staff is looking to have it done as a part of a rezoning process. So we don't have that ordinance in the place yet, but we are working towards bringing that forward. So we would like the county, the recommendation when this gets to council, to recognize that this one's going to be there, it might be a little ahead of it, that this kind of get pulled in and have to go through that same requirement of whatever the county decides that impact is going to be and how that language goes.
And notwithstanding that, we've got a rezoning request in front of us.
Correct.
Yes, sir.
And that was what I wanted to speak to. If my understanding serves me correctly, that planning commission is there to make a recommendation for approval or denial, my request would be that we have three more readings at council. Recommendation from, would be approved, contingent on final reading at council, that all the requirements of this study be completed by the final reading at council before the plans would, before it would be finally approved. But this is just the first step in a four-step process.
My issue still goes back to I cannot recommend approval of a rezoning until I understand the impacts from that rezoning.
And that's your motion?
And that is my motion.
And your motion is to deny the rezoning?
It is, I would say, more table, not necessarily deny, but I can't approve or deny it at this time because I don't have enough information to make a decision.
Until such time as the impact study is done.
Correct.
Could you make that an amendment?
I can make that amendment.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with the lady. Okay. So you're going to deny the zoning until we get an impact study that's not defined?
I think that we need to send it back to planning staff until that impact study is complete.
Okay. Do you want to modify your...
Yes, I will modify my motion that we send this recommend, that we send this request back to staff until the impact study is complete and the county has seen what it needs to see before we come back.
You want a second there?
Yes, sir, a second.
Okay. All right, so you want to send it back to staff until such time as the impact study is complete?
Correct.
Okay. We have a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion on that? Here, none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, moving along. Res zoning request number 837, property owner, CT3 Holdings LLC, Highway 78 Ridgeville. Request rezoning change from AC to general commercial district, Mr. Davis.
Yes, this is where I'm going to catch up with you here.
The room is clearing out.
All right. This one should be a little easier. So here we have a parcel here. If you look on your screen right here. You want me to slide?
Could you first, I can't hear you.
Just hold a minute till they get out.
Hold a second till we get everybody removed.
This is, is this the one next to JR Store?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so here, I'm going to try to come up. I'll try to bring this up if you need reference to it. But yes, it's a small, little, just shy of an acre piece right here. So this is one where we have, so going back, like, if you notice, we're in St. George, every single rezoning this time was AC to something. And, you know, we've, we've been knowing, staff's knowing that we've been trying to get ahead of this, and here we have three rezonings this month. So that is kind of a sign of what's ahead and what's going to be occurring out in these areas and how we're going to handle these rezonings. This one here, they actually simultaneously have been submitted. It's for like a little office, retail building with some parking up front along 78. Typically, under the old AC approach, it would have gone and been approved as a special exception. But with the AC text amendments, that process has been removed. So if you recall, the process is now is that when somebody wants to go from the agricultural kind of use, residential or ag use, that now to establish a commercial-like type use, it will require a rezoning. It gets evaluated as a rezoning and moves on to county councils, a rezoning. So really, this is kind of the first of that particular one, where instead of it going to the BZA for a special exception, it comes to you all now for consideration as a recommendation for rezoning to county council. So this is an area right here that, you know, it's got kind of a commercial note already. It, we, it's just outside of Ridgeville. We anticipate these types of commercial uses, and these, this is kind of where we would anticipate some commercial development out there. Staff recommends approval.
Okay, is the applicant or applicant's rep here for this parcel? Yes, sir. Please come forward, name and address. And please answer any questions from the commission.
Good evening. My name is Eric Latson. I'm with Earth Force Engineering. I was the engineer for this project, here representing the owner. I'd say the, the office warehouse, it's not so much retail. You're not getting any, I guess, having any consumer traffic coming in. It's mainly just for the workers and whatever trucks are coming and going. There's not really a whole lot of customer traffic coming in. 78 is a highly traveled highway, so it made sense to put it on that, on that section, especially next to JR's. But I don't think we'd be negatively impacting traffic for this roadway. I think the site plan is pretty straightforward, but I'm just here to answer any questions that we may have about the site.
Okay, commissioners? Thank you. I'd entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a second. We have a motion and we have a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign. The ayes have it. You're right, that one was certainly easier. Okay, subdivision applications and requests, final plats, Timbertrace Phase 3.
So, yeah, so here, this is Timbertrace Phase 3. Not to get confused with, not too long ago, we had a Phase 3 plat come to you all. I don't know, maybe it seems almost about a year ago. But three lots that were a part of that plat, of that final phase, which is the last three lots as a part of the Timbertrace PD, were pulled out because they had to go through a no-rise map amendment based off of, you can kind of see these lots back here along the floodway and the flood plain. Since that time, they have gone through that process, and they've been able to revise the line to essentially make these final three lots right here.
And that's all we're dealing with, is those three final lots?
Those three, it's like a sub, three-lot subdivision within Phase 3. So what happened was with Phase 3, we just left these lots off and just kind of had it as residual, knowing that once they were able to go through proper channels to get that no-rise certificate, that they would just come back and plat these final three lots. They're exactly how the preliminary plat was shown and done. So they're just now here to bring that forward. On this particular one, we have, staff can recommend conditional approval, and we are just working towards, since it's the very end of it, since it was a PD, there was a lot of open space and cultural resources and development and trails that were part of it. So we've just been working through arranging with the developer just to kind of do a final inspection, walk through with that, and making sure everything is good. And once that's done, staff can recommend approval of the final three lots.
Okay. Anybody here representing this development?
Jonathan Burns, GPA Lanza Rang, 2027 Bay Hill Drive, Charleston, South Carolina. We're just finishing up this subdivision, these last three lots.
Okay, none of the conditions a problem? Those are all being resolved?
No, that's, it should all be resolved. Lomar's going to be approved August 27, 2021.
Okay. Commissioners? Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
With conditions?
With conditions.
With the conditions, yes. Did you second that? You seconded?
I did.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here, none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign. The ayes have it. All right, Timothy Lakes, Phase 2. And I believe Timothy Lakes is right at 7827. That's the old Kirk Austin property, if I remember right.
So here, Timothy Lakes, if you, if you drive down along here, you'll see probably the development of Phase 1 that's been going along. They've been, had final plat approval on that not long ago, and they're starting to go vertical on some homes. My understanding that it's selling quite well. So here on your screen, you'll see that this was pretty much what comprised of Phase 1. Back here is what is Phase 2. So this is your, your normal final plat in regards to where we typically go, where you all have the authority to approve the final plat. It substantially conforms to the approved preliminary plat, just some very minor lot adjustments from... adjustments from construction. It, this, so this was kind of going back in R1 development. They elected to not do a cluster development. This actually was a straight 14-5. So you'll see there are no perimeter buffers, all the lots meet the R1 lot size. There is a buffer along the road here, though, that will help support and kind of hide it. So if you drive by there, a nice natural buffer was maintained and they did a nice entry feature right here at the main entry. Staff recommends conditional approval. We're just still working through finalizing some tree mitigation and how that's going to be handled. We believe the developer is just going to bond it because sometimes it's hard to kind of replant the new trees when you have a lot of the home construction still going on.
Do we have a traffic study on that one?
Yeah, traffic study was done on this.
Okay. Because what I understand it, the way it's laid out, all the traffic will exit out on 27, not on 78, correct?
Yeah, it has two entrance points right there.
On 27?
Right here, yeah, right here, one here and one here. But there was, there's some residual property right here, and I can pull the.
It's commercial, I believe, isn't it?
Correct. We had, not too long ago, we had a commercial rezoning of that corner piece right there and then through there, which was a part of this, as a part of the parent parcel.
What I'm getting to is with all the traffic that's coming out on 27, then you're going to go to 78, and that is horrendous right now. I can drive it every day through there. Is there a plan for intersection improvements there due to this, coming out to 78, as in a traffic light?
Oh, I, that would be a county engineer question. But I know that that portion of the road is a part of the Highway 78 improvements.
It is.
And I would like to think that that intersection as a part of that was considered.
With turn lanes.
And didn't the county on this section of 27 just receive money to improve it or not?
No, that's 27.
No, that's.
Up to the interstate.
That's north, yeah.
From Carter's up to the interstate.
Right. Yeah, I think that's a different section. But I do believe that as a part of 78, but I can't speak for the county engineer, that the improvements of 78 and this have, that they did do right-of-way improvements and has intersection improvements.
Because I think there's going to be a huge impact on that intersection, which already has a huge impact on it.
Yeah, so this, this is for final plat for Phase Two. They will be coming in for Phase Three, in my guess, in a few months for preliminary plan approval.
How about scan that traffic study and send it to us?
Will do.
I want to see it.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to have to recuse myself from this one. I just didn't want to interrupt you while you're speaking.
Okay. Make note, she's recused herself. Okay, is the applicant or applicants rep here? Yes, sir. Come on up.
Good evening, Justin Robinette with Hussey-Gabeau. I was the engineer for this project. And since you were speaking of traffic, we did not do the traffic study in-house. We did sub that out, however, it was done for the full build-out of 166 lots. It did not recommend any off-site improvements for turn lanes or anything associated with the entrances directly on 27. However, I do know that the, the intersection of 27 and 78 is being upgraded and that some, was it eminent domain was taken from the part at the corner?
Yeah, and isn't, I'm Jason Esposito, I'm the developer, 164 Nobles Point Street, Charleston. 78's being widened all the way up to 27, I believe, isn't it? And I know there's plans for the I-26 interchange to be improved into a proper cloverleaf, or at least that's what we'd heard.
Be a double roundabout.
Huh?
A double roundabout.
Dog bone.
Okay.
For our citadel grads.
Yeah. So I know there's a lot of improvement coming to that, that.
I was just wondering about a traffic light at that 78-27 intersection.
It didn't come, we worked with Mike, the Golds, huh? Goldston? Yeah, Goldston at the county, and the, the impact analysis didn't call for us to put in a traffic light or anything at 27. I would imagine that one will, will, very highly likely would go there at some point.
I would think so, too.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay. Commissioners, you got any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd entertain a motion.
Move to approve with the conditions of tree mitigation being complete.
Just receiving.
Satisfaction.
Yep, and receiving the official bonds from that.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, the ayes have it. Street name requests. Is there anybody who really wants us to read all these out or we want to? Everybody happy with them?
Happy with them.
I'd entertain a motion to approve the street names.
I move approve the street names.
Thank you. Do we have a second on the street names? We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Here are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, the ayes have it, the streets are renamed, are named. Okay, new business, text amendment to Dorchester County zoning and land development standards, and this is our traffic calming for subdivisions, correct?
Correct. I'm just trying to get.
This came down from council?
Correct. So this is a, as you know, we get text amendments sometimes, they're applied for by professional staff or, you know, members of the public. This is actually one that is a county-initiated text amendment regarding requiring all new residential developments to incorporate traffic calming measures as a part of the initial design of their road system. So it's, I just want to make sure, this is different than if you have an existing neighborhood and you're calling to complain about people speeding near an existing neighborhood, this is not applying to that. This is simply for new development. When a new developer comes in for a preliminary plan approval, that they would have to comply with installing as a part of the original development, the measures of traffic control. And it identifies specifically what types of items could be used for traffic control. I'll just read some of them. It could be traffic circles, roundabouts, curb extensions, canes, splitter islands, designated on-street parking. Something that's very important is that speed humps and always stops would not count as a traffic calming. Those are, you know, a stop sign is traffic control. Speed hump could be traffic calming, but that's not the direction we're going in here. So this is basically, those are the types that would could be used, but what you'd have to do is think of like some roads that you might have in a neighborhood, and what has been suggested to the county by the county engineer is to require these for every 700 feet of roadway, that one of these items, as chosen and approved by the planning department, but more importantly, the public works department, because it's more of a road design function.
Who's writing the text amendment?
Who's, who wrote this?
No, who's writing the text amendment? Because all we have is this one paragraph here.
That's it. That's the text amendment. That's going to be added into our land development code as 20 dot 4 dot 1i.
Okay. And no further definition than that? So be it.
Yeah, no, I mean, this is part of the discussion. I mean, if you have, if you're, after reading this, you all are saying, hey, is there more than this? Then I think that's what we need to talk about. But no, this is what was written by staff. It was actually kind of taken from another jurisdiction that runs a program like this. It's very similar in language. But, you know, as you can see, it's every 700 feet or as required by the county engineer. So it essentially would reply to all roads that are being proposed, but if, you know, certain roads where it doesn't make sense, the county engineer would have the authority to say, doesn't make sense here to do it on this type of road.
It's to prove incentive for with the strikeovers and the additions.
Excuse me?
The way y'all have struck out some language and added.
Right. So what that is, is that this actually went to county council and that language is what you saw. And then since then, because it was kind of like a rush thing, we have further evaluated it and had more working sessions, and that's the additional language that you see that's been added from the original text that was at county council and given first reading.
Mr. Chairman, I'm to assume this is in major subdivisions? Is that the section this in or does this include minor subdivisions also?
This would not, this would not refer to minor or major, this would refer to any development of residential development that builds roads that hit this requirement.
700 feet long.
The what?
That's the requirement, 700 feet.
700, every 700 feet.
Seems a bit like overkill, doesn't it, for a minor?
It does. And I mean, you're getting back into yours property and family subdivisions with that.
Any other questions? I'd entertain a motion. Did you want to exclude minor subdivisions?
I would.
Then give me a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with the addition of stating that it's major subdivisions.
With the exception of minor subdivisions.
With the exception of minor subdivisions, stating that this pertains to major subdivisions.
Okay. We have a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, the ayes have it. Do we have any old business? Mr. Davis, any old business? I don't believe we do.
Nope.
Okay.
I'm not scared. Do you have anything?
That's what I was.
Yeah. I was going to say we have.
Yeah, we still got it. East Edisto. Nice one, if there's any old businesses, Tom. East Edisto Homecoming Corner Three. Fire away.
Okay, so I'm going to pull that plan up. So this is, again, this is an East Edisto development, and so a lot of the stuff you've been seeing is Summer's Corner. Obviously, that's growing and developing at a very rapid rate. So this is the section that's just south of the high school on Delmar Highway. If you recall, that that was kind of a part of it as well, that the very first corner community plan was this one right here, which is currently, if you go by there, is currently under construction. So that, this corner here was approved some time ago, and they've moved it forward, and they've had staff level approval on their infrastructure plans, and I actually believe they just most recently got one of their first plat approved. So what they've done is they've resubmitted or submitted this particular next one right here. So this would be Corner Three Community Plan One, and it's separate of the other one, just kind of like when Summer's Corner has them, they have their different community plans. It's a part of what we refer to as, what they're referring to now as Homecoming as the development. It was currently referred to as Cluster 165. And this was one of the areas as a part of the East Edisto Development Agreement that had density restrictions placed on the total amount of units that would be able to go here, here, and then you can kind of start to see shape, but there's another piece up here. So essentially, it's deed restricted to a little over 1,000 units. So this particular one right here is their second one that they're coming forward with for approval. It's gone through the process to the CRC. It's been reviewed by staff and gone back and forth many times regarding getting it, you know, to a point of where staff could recommend approval. And they've done such that. So the boundary already exists. Lots of times, we sometimes recommend this on it being a boundary cutout. This boundary's already been cut out. You can see the limits of it there, and staff recommends approval as submitted.
Okay. Does anybody here representing the development? Yes, sir?
My name is Scott UT. I'm the owner's rep for True Homes, the owner of the property.
Okay. Commissioners? Questions? That was easy.
All right. Easy enough.
I'd entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Here are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, the ayes have it. I have no report today. Planning Director?
I have never a report, but I do have, want to thank you for those of you who are able to attend the continuing education session regarding rural towns. But then, just to let you know, and I'll pass this out, another opportunity, this is one you'll be able to watch on your computer's homes, and you don't have to come in. There are four different flooding series.
Thank you, ma'am.
If you need to get in, and I have there, but they will account for continuing education credits.
Good. We need three hours?
You need three hours. And so if you, if you were in attendance at the last one that we did.
It was an hour and a half.
Yeah.
And this will finish us?
You just have to do one of them if you only need an hour.
Okay, good.
But if you need three, you're going to need to do two of them, correct?
So this is, this is a smorgasbord kind of thing. We can pick and choose, won't we?
Okay. Anything else? Ms. Reiter, anything else? Okay. Public comment. Anybody like to come up and comment on anything you would like? Season four Yellowstone.
I want to make.
Mr. Chairman, I want to make one. Okay.
Welcome y'all to this end of the county for this month.
This is our end. Okay, one further motion is in order.
Motion to adjourn.
Have a second? Put your feet.